All right, good morning. Let's, uh, let's call this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I know we've got a full crowd this morning. November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, we'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Uh, I'd like to start this Board of Supervisors meeting with a, with a simple prayer of Mr. Slay. He's gonna join us in a second. Good morning, Mr. Slay. Do you mind saying a prayer to get this thing started today?
Thank you so much for today that you've given us. Help us not to take for granted that you've given us today. It's your day, Lord. You have given us the responsibility to come and use the skills that you've also provided to us to help our fellow man. Lord, thank you that these men have been willing to sacrifice their time, effort, energy, and their families' efforts so that they might come and serve our community. I pray that you would give them the wisdom they need today to make wisdom wise decisions. Lord, thank you for the way that you have blessed our community. You have provided for us, and what we're so grateful, we don't want to take it for granted. Thank you for our first responders that protect us, Lord. I pray that you would bring them home safely to their homes. Praise God.
All right, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Slay. We'll start with item three, public comments and recognition. Uh, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Morrow out of the gate for our first introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Crofts. Uh, great pleasure, ladies, to have you here. Uh, we're excited that Brandon High School has a state championship in volleyball girls. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Slay, we have adopted a resolution on behalf of this board, and I'll ask Mr. Slay at this time if you're kind enough to read it to us.
Big glad to. Thank you, Mr. President, Board. This is my high honor to read a resolution that has been prepared that is recognizing and congratulating the Brandon High School volleyball team on their two thousand and seventeen MHSAA state championship. Whereas the Brandon High School volleyball team won the two thousand and seventeen Mississippi High School Athletic Association State Championship by defeating Pascagoula, Oak Grove, Tupelo, and Sarasota Central without losing a single set in an impressive run to the state championship that was held in the Superstate Diversity. Whereas the Bulldogs finished the season with an impressive overall record of thirty-nine wins against only two losses and a conference record of six wins and no defeats. And whereas the most important statistic compiled by the Bulldogs is the team's combined high school grade point average, which stands at three point six eight out of four point oh. Whereas the Bulldogs are led by head coach Kelsey Walker, who was awarded the two thousand and seventeen Mississippi All-Star Coach. Assistant coaches Mallory Aldrich, Austin Baum, and Christie Klein. The administration of Brandon High School is to be committed for its outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success. Whereas the members of the two thousand and seventeen Brandon High School volleyball team are, I'm gonna call their names, I'm gonna ask them to come forward, uh, and for each of the kids that have some distinction that goes with that, their play this year, I will also announce that. Kate Bass, Miss Bass was awarded All District and Mississippi All-Star. Lechandria Chapman, All District. Deja Arrington, Alexa Hagerty, All District and All State Tournament. Josie Hutton, Kennedy Jordan, All District and Mississippi All-Star. Lane Marler, All District. Kelly Minshew, All District, All State Tournament, and Mississippi All-Star. Kylie Nations, Maddie O'Brien, also All District. Gabby Padilla, Brianna Shivers, and Courtney Hopps. Coach Walker, if you'll come forward, please.
I think we need to check their driver's license. I believe these are college age.
Coach Walker's here as well. Can you come forward, please? Yes, we want all the coaches here. Coach Fisher, do you want to come?
Stand up.
Athlete Director Peterson is here with us today, and I'm proud that he is here as well. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for Rankin County, Mississippi, does hereby commend and congratulate the members of the Brandon High School Bulldogs volleyball team, the coaching staff, and the administrative leadership for their championship two thousand and seventeen season. On behalf of all of the citizens of Rankin County, we extend our heartfelt wishes for continued success on and off the court. Coach Walker, this is the official resolution, it's been signed by each of the supervisors, and on behalf of the supervisors and our county clerk, we are presenting this to you. It's suitable for framing. You can post it at the school. We're so proud of you ladies. We're excited, as a Brandon High School graduate myself, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of recognizing my alma mater on the state championship. Congratulations.
Hey, uh, hey, for this picture, hey, Charles, for this picture right here, Sheriff, you and John wanna come up? Hop in this picture, y'all good, Sheriff? Stop in. Come on.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Girls, I'm gonna squeeze in.
Oh, they're ready to go now.
How many of y'all are juniors? Anybody juniors? Look, when y'all played Northwest, would y'all let us maybe win a game or two? Let a few balls drop if you can? Yeah, if you don't mind, you still win, just, if you don't mind, just let us score a few if you don't mind.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you, girl.
One thing I do wanna add real quick is, it'd be amiss if we didn't notify, at least recognize the parents and these, and their brothers and sisters to these young ladies, because they've also made a sacrifice. Granted, they have not made the sacrifice that you ladies have made, but they have been a big contributing factor to y'all's, uh, team membership and your, and your ability to put this together. And couldn't be happier, Coach Walker, when was the program started? Two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine is when the?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight. An astounding accomplishment in such a short period of time. We're excited and look forward to seeing you ladies here next year, same time. Uh, thank y'all.
All right.
Y'all may wanna go ahead and leave, this is gonna be a long round.
Look, historically, what they do, they take all y'all to Cracker Barrel or somewhere for breakfast after here, so, uh, I'm sure y'all'll be excited for that. That's exactly right.
Well, that's the AD's there for, huh?
That's why you got the AD and his card, so, uh, y'all should be good on that.
That's what Northwest does.
That's what Northwest does when we win, that's exactly right. We just don't win enough, that's our problem, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies, very much. All right, as they exit, as they exit this morning, uh, we'll bring in Mr. Brandon Cobb can kinda make his way through the tall trees. Man, Brandon Cobb after that.
Y'all always give me the most interesting people to talk about. Um, last time it was the soldier that was honored for his ship, now behind that, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna start asking Ms. Janice to put me the last on the agenda.
I think she does that on purpose to you.
It was good to see y'all this morning. End of the season, uh, cold weather, at least Mississippi-type cold weather is coming in. Um, the last two months, we've had some up and down weather, hot one day, cold the next, but we've seen a major decrease in mosquitoes, uh, and then an increase, then a decrease. But, uh, they're on their way out for the winter, and so are we, but we're looking forward to coming back, and there's gonna be some major changes on how we do things. I wanna work a little bit closer with y'all personally, see if we can get some things changed, make it a little bit easier on us and the people. Uh, the company's making some changes, we're gonna have some different, uh, equipment, software, and stuff to make it better and the reports better, so y'all can see more of what we're doing. And, uh, it's just getting the cold weather and the, uh, lack of rain bringing the season to a close.
Hallelujah. Yes, I know you're not really happy about that.
Actually, I am. After this summer, it's been a little hectic, I need just a little rest to recharge before I hit it next year. So, uh, but we're excited about some changes that come next year, some things that happen in the company I can't really go into, but things are gonna be a little bit better next year than what we've been doing, which I hope we've been doing great, we're just gonna be greater. And, of course, we're still, if you need to call us if there's a problem, we get a heat wave at the end of November, and if the ski decide to come out and have a picnic, you can still call us, we're still available, but we're gonna be shutting down here the next few days for the winter, go ahead and start winterizing the trucks and equipment and stuff. Usually leave one where we can still get out and do stuff. So, if you need, is there any questions?
Nope.
Any problems, comments?
Oh, you didn't even go there.
All right, thank you, Brandon, very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Well, look forward to seeing y'all next season, and y'all have a good day.
Yes, thank you.
All right, good morning. All right, Mr. Guy Warren, Risk Management Partners? Good morning, Guy, how are you doing?
Good. What we did, just did a recap for you guys, we know how you like it. This is the detailed version, I'm gonna leave this to Craig and Ms. Laura, and I'm just gonna hand these out, and we'll go over these real quick.
This is the policy that covers, uh, the board liability and the law of legal liability and the employment practices liability of the county. Uh, it's all under one policy. Uh, this is the policy that is endorsed by the National Sheriff's Association. Uh, it's the same program we've been with for many years. Uh, the good news is, the rates are actually, uh, lower this year. Uh, the, the difference is, we've got a, a bigger budget, and we've got more employees in the Sheriff's Department, which is the way they rate it. It's based off the class of employees and number of employees in the Sheriff's Department, and also based off the budget for the public officials liability. So, uh, what we did was, just to give you kind of a comparison, to show you two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then the renewal for this year. As you can see, the, uh, board liability is actually down a couple hundred dollars, and the, uh, sheriff's, uh, liability is up, but again, that's based off the employees, but the rate is actually down. And you see the rate down there at the bottom, it's actually, on average, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars per employee, whereas last year it was six hundred and eighty-three dollars per employee. And the, the good thing about this, again, it is endorsed by the National Sheriff's, uh, Association, it includes, uh, the fees to join it, but being a part of this program, those fees are actually reduced if you just tried to enter the pro, the association without buying the insurance. So, there's a benefit from that side of it, too. And they provide a lot of, uh, services to the sheriff's departments, training and all kinds of things like that.
All right.
Uh, like Guy said, we've got some detailed proposals over here, if you wanna see those, with claim recaps and that kinda thing.
This is a line of insurance that's really a lot more difficult to, I guess, approach a lot of the different markets. There's very limited marketplace that, that would accept this type of insurance, and the ones that we just send out to see if there's any interest whatsoever, they have shut us down and say they cannot compete with us, so.
It's not, it's not like trying to shop your homeowners, you know? Uh, it's a very specialized line of insurance, for sure.
Thank you, fellas.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Mr. Mickey Watkins.
Thought we had a bank coming here, Regions.
Well, it's Regions Insurance, but that's okay, it's a part of the, the bank. Don't hold that against me.
Yeah. How are you doing?
Thank you.
Good morning, it's that time of year again. Uh, met with, uh, county administrator a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, for the upcoming plan year, uh, as you can see by the numbers at the top, your claims for the county health plan, uh, they continue to run high. As you can see, they've been running high the last four, four years, really, uh, and they continue to run just a little bit high. The second part of that, is the, uh, handout that I just gave you, is to show you the, the, uh, the power of the Blue Cross discounts, you're currently with Blue Cross. Uh, the county administrator and I talked about some other things during our meeting, but, you know, at this point in time, you're not gonna find another carrier out there where you can get a sixty-three percent discount on your claims. I mean, you know, you guys have consistently, over the last several years, run close to, right at ten million dollars in claims, and at the end of the day, y'all only end up paying about thirty-five, thirty-six cents on the dollar for every dollar that is being billed to your employees when they go to the, uh, to the doctor, the hospital, whatever the case may be. So, those discounts are very important, a very important consideration is, you know, for y'all, as to make sure that y'all are with the carrier that has the most power out there to negotiate rates for y'all. Um, the other thing, the board did vote last year to, uh, make a change to your benefit plan on your pharmacy. Uh, the pharmacy, uh, the, the plan that we made for the first nine months of the year through the end of September has actually saved the county about forty-two thousand, a little over forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the reality is, that what can't be measured is the fact that within that, you probably also had some employees who, due to the implement, implementation of that deductible, decided to change a prescription drug, okay? So, they said, "Well, gosh, I don't wanna have to pay that deductible, so I'm not gonna get this expensive drug anymore, I'm gonna go get one of the generic drugs that'll be." So, in reality, you guys have saved probably a good bit more than forty-two thousand, but we know of forty-two thousand hard do, hard dollars that you have definitely saved. If I had to estimate, I would estimate that you probably saved somewhere in excess of about sixty thousand dollars in reality due to people switching their prescriptions. Uh, as I do every year, I sent your reinsurance, which is the fixed cost part, you know, all of this is variable, 'cause this is claims on your employees, and they can fluctuate away from one year to the next, even though generally speaking, they, as you can see, they stay in a pretty tight window. Uh, I did shop the reinsurance, I sent it to seven different reinsurance carriers, three of them declined to quote because they said they just couldn't get the rates down anywhere near. This is actually the first year in a long time that I had, uh, three other carriers outside the incumbent who actually, uh, uh, bid on the business. Uh, again, they did not come under, all of that was supplied in a document to, uh, the county administrator, if y'all wanna see it, all of the quotes that I received, the declines that I received. Uh, the, the net bottom line on that is your fixed cost, your Blue Cross administrative fee is gonna say that stay the same for next year, uh, your reinsurance cost is gonna go up about eight and a half percent, which is the equivalent of about twenty-four thousand dollars for the year, a couple of thousand dollars a month. Uh, but that was the lowest bid that we received, and, uh, we did have a couple of what's referred to as lasers on a couple of individuals that are covered under the health plan. Right now, y'all assume the first hundred thousand dollars of risk on all of your, everybody covered under the plan, uh, you have very few people that ever hit that, obviously, but, uh, there are two people that they're asking an additional forty-five thousand dollars and an additional thirty thousand, so it'd be one forty-five and one thirty. And the, I think one of those has actually resolved itself, you know, or is resolving itself, so you'll probably only have the one laser for, uh, next year. So, uh, any questions from the board?
Yeah, this is, uh, for nine months, right?
Correct.
So, based off this, we would come about a hundred thousand less than last year, if we stay at the pace we are now.
If you, if you stay the pace you are now.
But, we dropped a good many people somehow. How did we get a thousand off?
Well, well, that's a, that's a cumulative number, and remember, that's only nine months. If you take that eighty-two, divide it by nine, multiply times twelve.
I stole members who, I got out of claim, I'm with.
Year-to-date.
All right, so we gonna come close where we were last year.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, y'all are down just a little bit, but not, not significantly.
Well, I mean, the goal is not to go up, so, I guess, that was a good thing.
Yeah.
Did, you said here that you had made some suggestions to?
Well, we just talked about, you know, um, there's some low-hanging fruit out there, some things that y'all could do, and, and Laura and I discussed that, and I don't know if we wanna do it in this forum, or we wanna do it in another forum, but y'all's prescription drug costs, y'all, y'all cover a lot of prescription drugs right now, that y'all are, y'all are basically on what Blue Cross refers to as an open formulary, which if your, your employee goes to the pharmacy to get a prescription filled, it gets filled, okay? What category it falls in is a different story. A lot of the drugs that y'all are currently, uh, covering would not be covered under what Blue Cross refers to as their closed formulary. I have ordered, I have not received yet, but I have ordered what's called a disruption report, so that y'all can look and see if you went to the closed formulary, how many people would be impacted by changing to their more restricted formulary. And basically what it is, is it takes a lot of, of, of drugs that are brand names and says, "We're not gonna cover these brand names," 'cause there's ten generics out there that are just as effective. And that's not a decision that Blue Cross makes, that's a decision that their team of physicians, that's part of a board, a consulting group that's with Blue Cross, a pharmacy benefit manager, uh, and that is really low-hanging fruit for you guys, conservatively. Y'all could, based on, you know, where your, your claims have been, that's an easy hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings, and it could potentially be even more than that. But with that being said, let me be very candid, you're gonna have some upset employees if you go to a closed formulary, 'cause a lot of drugs that have been covered in the past are not gonna be covered, but it's really low-hanging fruit for you guys.
That'd be interesting to see what, what all the look.
And as soon as I get the disruption report, I'll pass that along to Laura, and, and y'all can take a look at it. And, and if I need to come back, I'll be, certainly be glad to do so, to discuss that.
The only other thing we talked about, which you might not know, was the difference that's a, could potentially do something, would be a deductible increase.
Yeah, I mean.
But that wouldn't be as much a savings as cutting the low-hanging fruit as you referenced, huh?
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, we, we've changed the deductible a time or two, and, and, you know, obviously, all that does is that just transfers cost from the health plan to your employee.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but, but anytime you do that, that is a savings to the county. And, uh, so, you know, I mean, look, at the end of the day, there's really only three things you can do. You can increase the county's contribution, you can increase the employee's contribution, or you can change your benefits, or a combination of all three. You just need to make sure you're with the carrier that's getting the best pricing, which I feel certain that you are, and then everything else is, okay, where do we wanna move with all those moving parts there?
I'm interested in seeing the, uh, change on the prescriptions, but a lot of our employees are not high-salary people, and this is one of the benefits, this is why they work for us.
Right.
And, so I don't wanna change deductions, you know, or, or their costs into this.
Right, and, and I understand that, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, I mean, I, I, you know, I know we've done that in the past on two or three occasions, and, and I, and I, and I get it, I understand it, but, you know, we're looking ways to reduce the county's liability, you know, and try to get the county liability more in line. I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that, I'm just saying that's a way to do it, you know, that's another way to do it.
And, something else Mickey and I talked about, if you do it, it does not affect the majority of the people, because by what pages he gave me that shows, it's a very low percentage of our people that even meet their deductible. So, it's not like you're going to affect four hundred employees by doing that.
Let, let me give you an example of what Laura is talking about, uh, uh, well, that's not the right page, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, it is. So, so far this year, this is just the first nine months of this year, okay? Y'all have had a total of a little over eleven hundred people insured under your plan, which would include people who may have terminated, their records still shows up, or new people who are coming out, okay? Out of that eleven hundred people, you've had seven hundred and forty-two, which is about sixty-five percent of the people covered under your health plan, who have not had a single penny applied towards their deductible. The point is, even though your deductible is where it is, you're over-insuring the vast majority of your population. I mean, even if you look at all of two thousand and sixteen, for example, you had just under eleven hundred covered at some point during the whole year, and six hundred and thirty-four of them, which is about fifty-eight percent, didn't have a single penny applied towards the deductible. It doesn't mean they didn't go get a prescription filled, it doesn't mean they didn't go to the doctor's office, but none of those apply towards your deductible. So, that, that's one of the things that I work with clients on, is trying to look at data like this, because I think it's a common mistake in a lot of clients, that you over-insure your population.
I would, I would've just assumed that eighty percent of our people met their deductible, something like that.
Well, actually, actually, I can tell you that as well, um.
It's a lot lower.
Man, we got some healthy people.
Is that low, too?
Sixty percent.
I'm sorry, I closed the page, and, uh, for the, uh, in two thousand, in all of two thousand and sixteen, you only had two hundred and thirty people who met your deductible, okay? Out of just under eleven hundred, two hundred and thirty met their deductible. So far this year, you've only had a hundred and eighty-eight who have met their deductible, so, and that's, it's only six.
I guess that's because they're working all the time.
That's only sixteen percent of your employees.
They don't have time to go to the doctor.
Maybe so, maybe so. So, again, I mean, that's the point, I understand your point, you know, you wanna offer good benefits, but do you do it at the cost of?
The others, or us, or the taxpayer.
Yeah, well, a- actually, at the end of the day, y'all, but, you know.
If we had more money, we could give them a bigger raise at the end of the year.
So, but, but that is a good point.
Well, if that's something that we may consider in future, um, it'd be nice if we really educate our employees on, uh, you know, health savings plan, so that they can fund it, go ahead and have, be prepared, so if, if we do raise the deductible, it wouldn't be, you know, as, uh, much of an impact on them.
Well, and that's something that Laura and I talked about as well, is the fact that, you know, what a lot of employers y'all sides do, is they have a second plan out there, you know, I mean, they, they may make like your base plan, if you will, just purely hypothetically, say a twenty-five hundred or a three thousand dollar deductible, and you don't take the current plan away, you just say, "If you wanna get the really good plan, you're gonna pay the difference in the premiums."
Okay.
Okay? So, y'all can, y'all can, because again, with, if you've got sixty to sixty-five percent of your employees who aren't meeting your current deductible, you're really over-insuring a big part of your population. But if you've got those thirty-five percent that think it's important to have a lower deductible, well, we're still gonna offer it, it's just you're gonna pay for it, okay?
Joe, we do send out emails and flyers every year, especially around open enrollment time, telling people about the medical savings plan that is a tax deduction for them, and a way to build money. They even, a poll will come in on our open enrollment, and now we have a card, like if I have a medical savings plan, and just say I put a thousand dollars in a year, I can take that card, instead of paying cash, I can go to the pharmacy and use that card, and it comes out of my plan that I have that's tax deductible over here. So, we offer it every year, we try to explain it the best we can to everybody.
Well, I think we need to, if we did it verbally, uh, that we would, might be able to get more participation. But I do like the idea of the two plans offered. What's the negative side to us doing that?
Well, you know, the obvious downside is that, I'm, again, using hypothetical numbers, let's say you went with a higher deductible plan, and the county continued to pay what you're paying now towards the cost of that deductible, and then you offer your current plan, that premium may be, you know, a hundred dollars a pay period, or whatever it is, but the number is the number, and you've gotta charge that number if you wanna help your bottom line.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna comply, they're, most employees are going to take it that, "Well, you know, you lowered my benefit, but I want this really good benefit, but now I gotta pay a hundred dollars for it instead of whatever."
Yeah.
And, so, but, but that's the only downside, I mean, you're just gonna, you know, you're gonna hear from employees.
But we would give them the choice, though.
We had that, we had that many years ago, when we had a two fifty versus a five hundred dollar, um, deductible, which was a long time ago, but we did offer the two plans, and if they wanted the two fifty, they paid a little bit more to get that lower amount, so, it's something that we could do.
I think it'd be worth, very much worth looking at.
Yep. Okay? And, you know, look, if, if that's on the board, I mean, we, it would be good to do it January first, but, I mean, you know, it's something we could potentially implement mid-year.
That's when we did it last year, wasn't it? January first?
That's when our insurance renewed.
It renews January first.
What did we, what is the deductible now, right now?
Thousand dollar deductible.
Thousand dollars.
From seven fifty to a thousand?
We went, we, didn't we bump it last year?
We did, we did.
From seven fifty to a thousand.
Or year before, whichever one. We didn't touch it like a year before.
We did the prescription last year.
Yeah, it was year before that we went to a thousand. Yeah, it was year before that we went to 1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is still, and I'm not advocating that y'all do it, but if you look around at the market, 1,000 is still extremely low comparative to other, what other counties are doing, what individual plans do.
And I say this every time that Laura and I get together, but, you know, going back to kind of your questions, Jay, I mean, tell your employees to talk to their neighbors about what deductible does your employer offer, if they offer a plan, and how much is it to be on their coverage or how much is it to cover their dependents? Because y'all are very generous on what you charge to have dependents on the plan and I understand why, but, you know, y'all, it's, it's still a good deal for your employees.
Well, it's always something we need to stay on top of, and I know it's too late for us to implement any changes now, really, but I would like for, during, just before we...
It would not...
Well, January 1 is our new...
Right, we have open enrollment, it wouldn't be too late to change the pharmacy part if that is something you choose to do because that doesn't affect what's coming out of a person's paycheck. We still could implement, like Mickey said, it doesn't have to be January 1, even if we didn't do it till February or March, you still could change.
I thought we had to do it at the time of our open enrollment.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's certainly better to do it then, but you don't have to do it then.
You can change it.
Okay, all right.
Well, let's just look at the numbers and then we can make a better decision, I think.
All right.
And you have time to inform people and everything.
Yeah, because there is education involved, no doubt about it.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Watkins, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Mallett, next up on the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our life insurance and long-term disability renewal. I have nothing to pass out because I'm right in the middle of negotiating these rates. We sent it out to 11 carriers, some we've had in the past. Life insurance comes in cycles like everything else, every three, four years, companies who hate municipalities, three years later, they love them. So, I've had three declines and I've had two companies who are interested, but based on the timing of this meeting, I have a 1 o'clock scheduled time. We may get a slight increase, we may not. I will know, I've talked with Ms. Laura this morning, based on my 1 o'clock conversation that we're going to work on this afternoon, we may not, but we may have a little. That negotiation time is at 1:00 today. And so, Cigna is the company we've had since 2011, we've paid about $416,000 in life claims since then. There's nothing that I see in the long-term disability and/or the life insurance that would require any kind of substantial or basically a rate increase based on, based on those numbers. We have very few long-term disability claims. As you know, when we change, long-term disability, when we change companies, the people who are currently on, for example, this, the Cigna disability plan currently, let's say we change, they still stay on that Cigna disability plan, they don't come over to the new company. So, we've been with them for six years. We also state, we have, our company has a substantial amount of business with Cigna, which gives us a little bit of, gives me a little bit of leverage in negotiating the rate. And that time was set last week for Wednesday at 1:00. And so I have nothing to pass out, but I want to let you know there is a potential that there might be a slight, but there are also potential that there might not be any.
Good.
All right.
So, any questions?
All right, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Very much. One other thing I want to add, under public comments and recognition, I want to take a special second and thank Mr. John Maul, the informant this morning, was leaving Rankin County, headed to Ottenbaum County School District, is that correct?
Startle.
Startle. So, I want to take just a second and thank you on behalf of the board for all your hard work and service here in Rankin County.
Years.
You're definitely going to be missed.
Years, years.
And I know you put in a lot of hard hours with people always complaining and fussing and griping and...
I thought everybody loved him.
They may, they may, they may.
That's just his coworker.
That's right. Maybe his twin. So, but again, I want to take a second and thank you for your hard work and service in the county, it's much appreciated and you'd surely be missed over here. I know Ms. Renee will miss you quite, quite a bit over there. Thank you, John, for your service.
When are you leaving us?
Today, I think.
Monday after class.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Last week of it. Thank you, John, for your hard work. Item four, old business.
Sub move.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul to accept old business.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item four passes. Item five, consent agenda.
Sub move.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Consent agenda passes. Item six, Mr. John Sullivan. Good morning, John.
Sorry about all these, but the taxpayer doesn't tell you anything until they lose their property and then they...
Let me interrupt you just a second. Does it require for him to read out everything on these things or can we just say we'll move past A, B, C?
That can be spotlighted, dude. I mean, don't even want you up there. Still, my fun.
Nothing, no offense here, John, but I make a motion, we approve number A.
Got it.
I'm quite okay with it. Trust me. I said, why do you not want to hear some of them?
Oh, second.
It's no discussion, I would assume, unless somebody's got discussion.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item, item A passes. Item B.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item B passes. Item C.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Maul.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item D, Mr. Maul.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Maul.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item E.
Motion to approve.
Well, you don't even say nothing.
Why don't we just, why don't we just say, see through L.
I'm counting, I'm counting in flow right now.
Yeah, good lord.
Item E, so we got a motion by Mr. Maul to approve item E.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item F.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Maul.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Great job, Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess next time you'll need to come, John, you just stay over in your office.
All right, item seven, Mr. Mike Harris.
I make the motion to approve item A.
Here we go.
Don't let me read it.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Maul, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign.
Thank you.
All right. I tell you what, we got some excellent presenters today, you know? Item eight, Mr. Buster Parker. I don't care what happens, I'm going to...
There is discussion here, there is discussion here.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make Mr. Buster read this one.
No, we fixing to go and close this baby out quick. You don't have to get up there, we can go and take care of it.
Good morning, Mr. Buster. Item eight.
Yes, sir. Cedar Lane, we would recommend approval of the construction drawings, this is a development out, out of 468 across some of the aisles, and I believe...
I said, my area, this area is behind Monterey Fire Station, it's actually kind of eating behind Cedar Ridge, I believe is the name of the subdivision.
All 468.
Kind of behind the fire station.
I have some, I have some concerns with a number of lots they're proposing along with what's existing there and a life safety issue far as getting the traffic in and out and stuff like that, so I'm going to ask that we table this until the November 30th motion, I mean, Mr. President, I'd like to table, I'd like to make a motion to table this issue.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul to table, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion?
I'm just curious, what is that zone?
Is zone appropriately, they're doing everything by the book, everything by the book.
Properly.
To the T.
Yes, he's correct.
I'm assuming that's R1B.
Whatever that is, R, yeah, is that what it is?
R3?
Yeah, I think it's R1B. Are you challenging me, Miss?
No. She said John was challenging her, it's John's last day.
John's last day, okay.
You see how you're going to get thrown on the bus right here, you know? It was John challenging her, wasn't it, Renee?
Or maybe R16.
I just, I've done a work out there lately, but it's no biggie, but it...
For y'all that don't know those, they're making those letters and numbers up.
I told them. Kind of zoning change. But if you want to be part of that, we're going to have another pre-conference, development conference, I'd be glad to include you in on that conversation if you want to come join me.
I just think we got a good supply of, you know, 1,500 square foot homes in that area.
I won't, I won't address the market issue, mine's more like safety issue out there and the number of cars coming in and out of that development and given where it is. So, that's, that's my concern, we're going, we're going to work on it there, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Maul, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes, we'll table. Item nine, Mr. Slay.
I make a motion, we approve items A through C.
Items A through C and a motion by Mr. Maul to approve.
If I can get Mr. Maul to change that to A through D, that would be wonderful.
I'm sorry, A through D, y'all changed this up on me.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Maul, A through D, second, you agree with it? Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
And D?
Yes, sir.
Where's that located?
Right there.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign.
Yes, we're going to be...
Items A through D, okay, items A through D passed, sorry about that, Mr. Slay.
I'm sorry.
Item E, go ahead.
E and F, if we can take those together, that's just setting a public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Maul, second by Mr. Gaines on items E through F, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item G.
Yes, sir, that is a public hearing for the David W. Stevens and Rankin County joint rezoning request, 529 Williams Road, that's a District 1 parcel. Mr. Stevens is seeking to rezone 42 acres at 529 Williams Road from RE1A to RE1. He is proposing to develop the property into parcels no smaller than 2.75 acres. He submitted three lot layouts to serve as a rough draft of possible options for the property. All three options show an access from Williams Road and an access from Highland Drive. The first option contains eight lots, the second option is nine lots, and the third option is 10 lots. The adjoining properties to the north along Highland Drive are zoned RE1. Rankin County is joining the rezoning, the, this zoning action to include two adjoining parcels that lie between the subject property and Highland Drive, and this will keep the zoning in the area uniform. This time we'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone to speak in opposition to the David Stevens rezoning request. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? If you'll come forward, please, state your name, your address. For others who may be speaking in opposition, if you hear something ahead of you that's already been addressed, please avoid that discussion in your, when you discuss it.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Eugene Harris, I live at 143 Highland Drive in Florence. I'm not really a spokesman here, so I'm not really sure what to say, but I kind of went around and talked to all the neighbors that bought this property and were pretty concerned about it and right now seemed like the large, one of the largest concerns is the easement off of Highland Drive. From the cul-de-sac up to that corner is all privately held property. And I didn't realize that he could, you go on a private road to gain access to his land.
I think you can answer that. We've had a meeting, that's, that's going to be between him and the landowner.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's really not what this would be about. That'd be between him and the landowner as far as accessing off the private property.
This is a rezoning matter? This is to determine whether or not it can even be developed? The issue of the access from the private property is a separate matter, unrelated to this here.
Oh, okay.
This is just zoning and explain the zoning you need to, what it's going from to what and where this really has kind of been official if you're going to have a development.
So, RE1A...
I understand that.
...is currently allowed for one acre lots, but they just simply can't be in a subdivision in RE1A. You can have one, a minimum of a one acre lot in RE1A. You can't have a subdivision in RE1A. So in order for this man to have a subdivision on his property, which is multiple lots, he must have it rezoned to RE1, but the lots still cannot be any smaller than one acre. So there is no distinction on the utilization of the property other than it being within the context of the subdivision. That's it.
Okay, well, the information that I received from this office concerning the zoning classifications didn't spell out anything as far as the size of the lot. That's one of the reasons that we're here.
Right, the zoning ordinance itself is a one, the one kind of a giveaway?
Oh, well, I don't know anything about that stuff.
Right, you would know, right, I understand that.
So, and I mean, now, I, I asked about what his proposals were and I was informed of the eight, nine, and 10, three different proposals, but nobody could tell me where the easements were supposed to be located. And then also I was informed that they were saying that the, once it's been rezoned to RE1, that there would be no mobile homes. But yet, when you take a look at the information that I obtained from this office, you look at Section 702 or, well, yeah, it says 2905, item E, it says use of manufactured home may be allowed for the following hardship and temporary emergency situations, and they give four different ones. I've been there long enough and seen how trailer houses have worked, and I've never once seen anybody make anybody move one. And that's a major concern for me.
What do you mean, you're talking about moving one that's already there?
Yeah, because on, three out of the four exceptions says, has a one-year limitation on how long that mobile home can be there or manufactured home can be there, but on the very first one, there's no limitation.
Huh? Do what?
The board would determine how long it can stay there, that would be a condition that's all considered.
The one, some that are already there at this time.
No, it would be for a new one coming in. They could apply for a hardship, it would still require conditional use, the sign would still go out. If they had, if they were opposed, they would have an opportunity to come to a hearing and say that they were opposed.
Okay.
And then also another concern for all the people involved is the water runoff in that area. Water has always been a major problem all the way around Williams Road, from one end to the other. When it rained hard until they put in the new access to come out where Jerry's Fish House is, you couldn't get out on either end.
Yeah, I know.
So the typically how we handle it, and this is, I'm glad that we have residents who come and share these concerns with us. As you know, when we address matters in a zoning context, that's a different conversation altogether than what these issues being raised are. We need to hear these issues, but, but this is, this is premature work to talk about drainage and all that other kind of stuff. If it can't be rezoned, it can't be developed in a subdivision, and there's no need to get to other discussions about access easements and drainage. Because there won't be a subdivision there if it doesn't get rezoned. So it's premature. We need to hear these issues, but, uh, so really, all we're here today to talk about is whether or not the property should be rezoned so that the plans of the developer can then go to the next step, which is all dealing with these concerns that we got here.
Well, the, uh, one thing I wanna make clear, I think, currently, as is the zoning today, I think he can move a trailer in today with the zoning it is right now. But he can only move in one. So is your concern more than one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, he can move, he can put more than one in there. That's currently where it is now.
Well, he'd have to subdivide the property.
Huh?
Well, I mean, I find-
Not if you sold, not if you sold lots at RE1A, isn't that correct?
Well, you can't develop in the RE1A. It only allows for four.
If you divide it, you're a subdivision.
No, I know, but if you just wanted to sell some lots off-
I think Jared's talking about the spelled approach that we see a lot of times, where the lots get divided out. Not concurrently, they just simply get divided out over time, and it's hard for us to spot that as a subdivision development.
Is this what the gentleman that you know is, is intent? Do you know?
He's not intending on any, any, uh, nothing to do with mobile homes, but he, and, uh, he's intended on selling, actually, he was intending on selling three acre and larger lots is what his intent was. And it couldn't be, uh, done that way unless it was rezoned RE1. And so, uh, but that's the reason he's just trying to get it rezoned.
Alright, well, I understand that, assuming that he, it got rezoned, and he's trying to sell off these lots. What's to prevent the next person from buying that lot to try to break it up?
We, he can't, he can explain that too.
Well, he's, he's gonna have, he's got some natural limitations by the fact that the sewer is not there.
No, there isn't.
So he's gonna be, he's gonna be burdened by the requirement that he's gotta be the health department to take care of any effluence, right?
Well, actually, yeah, go ahead.
That's gonna, that's gonna limit it. Anything less than an acre probably not gonna fly. I can assure you of that. The health department's gonna allow for that. So, one and a half, so he's, he's got some natural limitations that are there on any subdivision. One of the things that we can do, uh, as part of the approval process is, uh, as a condition even to the rezoning, we can mandate that in order for the rezoning to go through, the properties as defined on the plat that we have in front of us cannot be further subdivided. End of story. That's it.
And that, that's something currently that's, currently that is done. I wanted to hear all your, um, issues, and what I've had several phone calls, but once we explained to them, uh, most everybody's been okay with everything. But I will say, Mr. Stevens, uh, actually stopped by my shop, uh, a few days ago, and for whatever, uh, well, he told me why, but he would not be able to be here today. And he said if there was a, uh, he wanted to know what problems were, if there were problems, 'cause, and he said that if, in fact, if it's issues, I'm gonna actually table it for a later date. Because he, he asked that. He said, and he's really wanting to, uh, get everybody at peace with what he's doing. And, uh, so I'd like to hear everybody else's, uh, whatever your complaints or issues are and questions are. And then I, obviously now, I'm gonna ask to have this table until a later date that he, he's back in town. It was something unfortunate, and he, anyway, just would not be able to be here today.
Okay, and I'm gonna make it real brief, and then I'm gonna let the other people speak. Um, just so that you all know, my property is right there where he plans on putting his easement. Okay?
But now, he can't, um, back there, that has nothing to do with the zoning.
I, I understand.
The easement strictly, that'd be your deal and his deal, and if you, you know, that's strictly y'all's thing. That has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
Or, or anything to do with the zoning.
Alright, alright, alright. Well, I understand. I mean, I didn't know that much about any of this, so you'll have to forgive me. I just know what my concerns are. And then the, one other thing from, in my particular case, is I have a, a larger home than the other homes in that area. And, and that was a concern for me is the size of the homes. It would be going up.
I think, and I think that's also usually in his approved plat, if it ever gets to that point. It would be in there, put house sizes, you know, and, and that's common too. We've, we've, uh, in a lot of the platted. But he can't plat anything or start anything till he, he gets it rezoned.
Right, I understand.
But no, those are things that down the road would be, um, possible to have as far as conditions on this said subdivision. I do know from what I have heard him say, uh, and I think when he sat here with us in the meetings, he was leaning, he wanted larger homes. And so, in, in the-
One of the factors that we typically look at is the south, the size of the surrounding properties, the houses on the surrounding properties. That's one of the factors that we look at when trying to gauge what would be an appropriate square footage requirement for a subdivision development in that area.
Well, I had asked that question before I came here, and I was told that it was approximately two thousand square feet.
That may be what he said. I don't remember.
I don't remember. I just know he, I don't know.
He said, he said twenty-two hundred or larger is what he was saying, minimum.
Okay, well, I'm gonna thank you very much for listening to me.
Sure, sure.
And I'm gonna let these other people speak.
Please. Okay. Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
I'm not a speaker.
That's alright.
Forgive me.
You will be after today.
But I had bought four acres from-
If you would introduce yourself to the board.
My name's William Clark. I live at, uh, 537 Williams Road.
Okay.
And my, my, I have four acres of mine's in the part to be rezoned.
Okay.
And, uh, when I bought that land from Mr. Williams back in February, he made no mention of a neighborhood being in there, and I just wanted to say that I want to oppose it.
Who'd you buy it to from?
From Mr. Stevens.
You bought from Mr. Stevens?
Right.
So he's already sold some of the land he's seeking to rezon?
This was a flyback.
Well, you can't rezon somebody else's land, can you?
Well, Rankin County has joined in to rezon these adjacent parcels that have already been sold because they are naturally attenuated to the parcel that's gonna be the subdivision development. And in order to keep that area consistent, it needs to be RE1.
I don't want my property rezoned if I have any say-so over it. I don't know if I do or not.
Well, what, what is he zoning now?
RE1A, um, is there a deed restriction on your property? I, I think that Mr. Stevens indicated there was a deed restriction that said you couldn't have any mobile homes or anything there. So RE, yeah, RE1 would be, um-
Well, I mean, so you're still gonna be building a house there, right?
Yes, sir.
Well.
What is, what, what are you opposing? I mean, what bothers you about switching?
I'm confused.
I don't want a neighborhood right in my backyard. Right now, it's all woods back there, and that, that's the reason I bought that land, is because I'm tucked up in the woods.
You're property, your property. Why do you not want your property go from RE1A to RE1?
Because I oppose the whole thing, so I, if my property, if I have any say-so over my property, then I don't want my property changed if it's gonna help him get that zoning changed.
Well, I don't think it has an effect, really. Actually, well, he didn't tell you he was trying to sell?
As far as I knew, he was leasing that land for bow hunters when I bought the property. That's what he's doing.
When did you buy your property?
Sir?
When, when did you buy?
Uh, in January or February.
Of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But that land, from what he told me, he was leasing that land to bow hunters. And that was my, that was the assumption that I had when I bought my property, because I wanted to be tucked away in the woods. I didn't want any neighbors.
Four acres?
Yes, sir.
If he sold these in three or four acre tracts, that they were very similar to yours, that you still wouldn't like that either?
I wouldn't. I don't want any neighborhood.
What would you do if the people down the road from you said that about you, to where you couldn't have bought your four acres?
They, they could have.
I know, I know.
And, and some of them, right, I understand. And, and some of them weren't real happy. I talked to them about it, and they were like, you know. But, you know, I, I'm trying to keep it wooded.
I understand what you're saying. Problem in, in, this is not just there, but I'm just speaking out. In Rankin County, everybody's trying to, because we've got so many people moving, wanting to come to Rankin County. Land that sits vacant is not gonna stay vacant long. I'd say a large acres that someone wants to try to sell, it's just happening. It's, it's unfortunate, maybe like in your situation, but it's gonna happen. Even if he just sold, he could go down the road and actually sell right down from you. He could sell some more land right there today.
I don't know, though. I, I understand where he's coming from. If he just bought the land and it was not told him that it was gonna be developed, I, I totally understand where you're coming from.
I mean, I bought it because I wanted to live in the woods, and now I'm gonna have a neighborhood right at my back door, and I just, I don't want that. That's not why I bought my land.
Alright, but that's really between him and Mr. Stevens. It's not really our case. I mean, I mean, we're here to decide the areas.
Fred just said, though, we are gonna incorporate his property into this.
Let's go ahead.
I don't wanna hear the rest of it, though. Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Yes, ma'am?
Can I get a copy of his drawings that he had?
Yeah, I have no idea.
He doesn't, he doesn't have anything.
This is the first time I've ever seen them.
They're just rough drafts, but they can get a copy.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not anything in stone. It's just a, like, if you wanna pencil out something, but I guess, it's good.
This is the first time I've ever seen anything of those. I want some of that.
She, she can get them for you. Alright, ma'am. How are you? Good morning.
Hey, I'm fine. My name is Jessica Bradford, and I live at 129 Highland Drive. My property abuts Mr. Stevens' property that he wants to consolidate. I just have a particular question. You're telling us that this is preemptive to be coming with these concerns, yet what you're doing is you're trying to rezon this based on the zoning we have only allows for small subdivisions. His rezoning that he's asking for can make a major subdivision on his property. I, I don't want a major subdivision behind my property. So, I mean, I don't see that as being preemptive if we're discussing the zoning, and the stipulation that differentiates my zoning from his zoning is that there can only be so many houses on my street, which, and I know this has also been staid, preemptive. We have major flooding on our street anytime there's any kind of rain. His property is high land compared to the rest of ours. It always runs off. If he comes in and makes a major subdivision and builds up more and has more houses, and then, as you guys said, has to have some sort of an issue of the sewage problem, all it's gonna do is make more runoff on our road, make more of an issue. And I, I don't see how that's preemptive if it's a difference between the two zoning.
Not everything that we're discussing would be ahead of time as far, uh, the issue of the number of lots and the use of the property, that's all on the table. That's a rezoning aspect of this, but issues of access and flooding and all, you guys know that that comes at the point in time when we're asking the developer to tell us what is going to happen with respect to the water, the stormwater, as you're leaving that site. That's a development question.
But when he says that, he just not, don't misunderstand. He's not gonna just let the developer tell him what's gonna happen with the water.
Right.
It has to be approved by the, yes, an engineer has to design it, and it has to then be approved by our engineer on-
Right.
And I'm just going down the, further down. We're not even to that point yet.
Right, I was gonna say, you guys are discussing the part that's preemptive.
Yeah, right.
But there's still issues that I have concerns with regarding the zoning that are current and on the table. I mean, what we have here is him asking for a major subdivision. What you've got in that area is not major subdivisions. They're all either privately owned properties or minor, I mean, they're small, and they're, and they're all, like, I mean, I am, as far as I know, for, for the people here that are represented, and, and the over thirty people that I have had sign a petition opposing this rezoning and this subdivision being put in, I am the youngest member living that has purchased on, in our neighborhood. These, these are people that, I mean, this neighborhood has been here forever. You've got houses, and that's the other thing, is that what you've got along Williams, you've got hobby farms. What we've got on Highland Drive, we've got a couple of different people who own chickens. We, I mean, what you're looking at for a major subdivision is not what we've got, not what we have come out to where we're at intending. So, I mean, I don't know what, what further steps need to be done to solidify any opposition other than stating this, and then, I mean, it's not, it's not what we want. And it's, and I don't see how it is cohesive with what is there and, and what can be done fundamentally as far as the environment's return.
Out of the thirty that signed the petition, I guess all of those thirty live very close to this.
Highland Drive and Williams Drive, and it was in less than two hours I had that many people in opposition.
What would you say the average size of their lots are, of those thirty?
It depends on the people that you're speaking with. Highland Drive, because they've got the smaller lots, it's still a smaller subdivision as opposed to a major subdivision. I believe the delineation between major and smaller is the number of houses within the subdivision, correct?
Minor, minor subdivision in the RE1A would allow you to have four lots. Uh, if you're gonna do more than that, you would have to apply to rezon, which is what he's doing. He's still talking about large lots, the smallest being, uh, I think he said two point seven five. And along Highland Drive, that's a subdivision, and y'all, his property borders Highland Drive.
It's not a plat, it's a subdivision.
But you're saying, I mean, I'm not talking about subdivisions.
Right.
You talk, are we talking about thirty houses, thirty different families that signed this? I mean, we're talking about like thirty homes around here, and they all average probably more than three acres?
Not, not necessarily more than three acres.
But you're saying this is not like what you have there?
Right, because, okay, so here's the thing.
What's the size of the houses of these thirty?
Let's, let's make this clear. Let's make this clear. The subdivision I'm referring to is Highland Drive proper, okay? Once you go past the cul-de-sac, and I have signatures from people past the cul-de-sac, they own forty to fifty acres back there. And they signed it. They don't want it either, okay?
How many of those, how many of those are past the cul-de-sac? I'm just trying to get a picture.
Houses are past the cul-de-sac?
Yep, yep.
I believe there's about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's seven, because they own between seven and fifty acres. You can't have a whole lot of houses down that road.
That's down the private.
That's a private drive.
That's a private drive.
Yes, yes, it is. But I don't see where that would be-
Down to where the Wickers live.
What's that?
Where the Wickers live.
Yes.
Liddell.
Yes, I, I don't see where that would be any less of a viable signature on this petition than the people that are on my, on my road per se. And, and, and when you're talking to me about not understanding where I'm seeing the difference between the two because of the lot sizes on my, on my road, the difference is my road has got, mm, I think, like, maybe fifteen houses on the road? Fifteen houses, that's it. I mean, a major subdivision's gonna be more than fifteen houses. You walk into Copper Ridge and you're overwhelmed.
It's not, it will not be Copper Ridge. And there were like nine, ten, and eleven.
Really, you're thinking two different things. It definitely wouldn't be a Copper Ridge.
Well.
It couldn't be.
It-
No, it couldn't be.
What was those three different options?
Yeah, let's make sure that it's all clear.
Cause I was thinking it was not more than like ten or twelve.
And here's my thing beyond that.
The proposal that I've read in advance of this hearing
Yeah.
Said that there is a, one option for this development is eight lots.
Okay.
A second option, nine lots, and a third option, ten lots. One of those three will have to be approved.
Oh, so you're talking about the maximum, most nine houses.
Ten.
Is ten lots.
Okay, so, but in clarifying this, if-
Right. Did all the people that signed that petition understand it wouldn't be more than ten houses?
Well, so first of all, because nobody clarified to us before the meeting, nobody, nobody could tell us before the meeting how many houses were going in.
I know, but you're saying minor, major.
Well, but no, that's, no, I'm not saying that that's what you guys have as in your paperwork, in when you go through, and the emails that, um, Ms. Janice Tindy sent me, and the paperwork that Jerry received from your offices, that was, that was a side, that was the biggest distinction between the two, was major and minor subdivisions. And the express description of a major subdivision favors more Copper Ridge than it would Highland Drive. So this is why I'm coming to you with this concern. Now, on a total personal level, even if he only has ten houses, which is what he's saying may potentially be the max. And, and I'm under the impression he's not a developer himself. He's a real estate agent, so he might, might then hire a developer to develop this property that he wants to sell?
He can only develop, he, he can only develop what he puts on over here to develop. If it's ten houses, that's all he's gonna develop.
Okay.
And nobody can go and say, no, we're gonna change it up and make it, uh, twenty houses. It can only be done what it's approved to do.
Okay.
If it ever gets to that point. I'm just trying to clarify some things that you're asking.
Right, and so, on a personal level, my concern with ten houses going in that area is the thousands of trees that make my house feel like it's not in the middle of downtown Florence, or the middle of downtown Jackson, or Copper Ridge, aren't gonna be there.
Well, I mean, it's cut over timber now, isn't it?
What's that?
Hasn't it been cut over already?
Not behind my house.
Well, I mean, and, and there's nothing to prevent him going and-
And I understand that, and I understand that, but that's why I was saying on a personal level, I don't, I don't want somebody coming in and developing that area.
I agree with you, but I, I don't know how you would stop him from cutting the trees he wanted to. But anyway, I understand your concern, and that's, that's what you're here for. And, and that's the reason we're gonna table it, but I do wanna hear what everybody, and, and also wanted you to be able to, I think you understand now that, and everybody, everybody else, that this is not a, uh, forty, fifty-house subdivision. This is, if it comes to that point, it's a nine, uh, eight, nine, or ten.
And with a minimum, say, twenty-two hundred square foot, um, I'm, I'm guessing, I hadn't, and I need to drive down there and look, even though it's not in my district, I, I know Jared knows. I'm guessing that at about three acres per lot and twenty-two hundred square foot, it would be equal or better than the homes around it, for the most part. I know he, this gentleman back here, he may have one of the larger.
Well, and actually, most of the houses that are, um, down past us- I mean, if you've got fifty acres and you're not farming it for cotton, you probably have a nice house. And they do, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, don't you think that that would probably fit in a twenty-two hundred square foot with three acres with? I looked at that plan, and there's an awful lot of them in there that don't have three acres and probably are not twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Probably the majority are not.
Our, our subdivision on our road is smaller than what goes on up.
Yeah.
But, but like Jean was saying, a twenty-two hundred square house, foot house next to his is like driving down the road and seeing a three hundred thousand dollar house and a trailer right next to it.
Mister Jean, coming to your house from the major road, how many homes do you pass now that are smaller than yours? All of them, maybe. I know, but just looking at them. Maybe twenty-five, twenty? Well, how many homes, when you leave the major road and come, cause you live kinda at the end of the road almost? Yeah.
I'm on Highland Drive, yeah.
Right. My, my point is, most, all the homes that you pass coming to your house are smaller than yours.
But they're a good distance for me.
Where this subdivision won't be.
But you'd still pass those to get there?
Yes. But the way it was played when I bought my place, there was only two houses on that fifty acres at that time, and there wasn't supposed to be any others, okay? And that's why I bought where I bought. And it's the same for most of the people that lived there, they bought there because we have a nice, quiet neighborhood. And we're trying to promote that.
I understand, I understand both sides, I mean, uh, and I guess that's what all this is about, to get all of it out where everybody understands, and then it'll come up for zoning down the road.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, all of our concerns that have been told to us are preemptive? When do we get to air them where it's a current and viable concern?
So, right now, our hearing is that you intend to table this.
Yeah.
So, this hearing will actually be moved to a new date. We will make sure that.
You'll know the same thing then.
These folks will make sure that Mr. Renee has their contact information. We'll make sure that they know when that date is. These concerns, although they've been aired here, I'm sure the board has discretion to rehear these so that we make sure we have everything on the table. But at that point in time, my assumption would be that Mr. Stevens will be here in order to give a defense to his application, and then the board will be able to hear from these folks again, should they choose to come, or others who may, could not be here today, that can come then. So, my suggestion would be that we close this hearing, and we make sure we get good contact information from the folks that wanna be notified. You can move to table if we can take it up at the appropriate time. They'll be notified about that time, and we'll do this again.
Has everybody pretty much got the same, uh, issues as what we've already heard? Okay, so, I mean, really wouldn't do any good till the next person come up. Okay, if you, I mean, if it's something different, you're welcome to come up. But if not, we'll just close it, and then we'll take it up another time.
I guess I do wanna ask a clarification on what you said as far as the, the tabling it. So, if we're tabling for a, another rezoning discussion, that is not going to be the meeting where our concerns are going to be brought up.
Today was the day for your concerns to be brought up, and today we could've voted on it, but since Mr. Stevens is not here.
Right.
And we really haven't had an opportunity to hear both sides.
Right.
We're not gonna act on it today.
Right, right, and I under.
And so, we're gonna set it for another day where he can be here and everyone else can be here. So, and, and that day, most likely, we'll vote on it.
Okay, and, but now, just to clarify, that's voting on the rezoning. And so, at that point in time, it would still be a, we are not ready to listen to the concerns of the sewage and all that other stuff.
That, that won't have anything, that'll be a whole nother time.
Sure.
The rezoning would simply be just the rezoning.
Right.
So, that is very. And then we have a development ordinance.
Right.
If we clear the rezoning, the process looks like this. If it's rezoned, this is where the neighbors can, can raise issues related to rezoning. If there are other issues that need to be addressed, typically, we allow the county staff to look through the development ordinance and make sure that development, the developer is complying with each of these concerns. We don't have a public forum where we receive neighbor issues about drainage, about traffic, and those kinds of things. There's not a public forum, I wanna make, I wanna make it clear.
So, yeah, that's, and that's what I was trying to understand. So, so the thing is, is that when you guys come back to meet for the rezoning, one that you've tabled right now, the concerns that we have brought forward today, that is still not going to be an appropriate platform for that because you guys are saying our concerns are to be dealt with after you guys have decided on the rezoning. And now, what he has just said is that there is no appropriate platform for us to come and talk to you about those concerns.
Those concerns can always be raised through the building department, through the consulting engineers.
Yeah.
You guys have the discretion to receive all of that at the time of the rezoning hearing. If you want to, you can hear all of those issues and have those put on the record to be addressed by the consulting engineer and the road manager.
Okay, okay, and that, and I, and I really just wanted to clarify that because it would, I know for myself, and I'm sure several of the people here, who, you know, what's represented here are people that didn't have to go to their nine to five today.
Right.
And, and, and so, we were able to come, but we still have, our time is valuable. And for us to come and then just be told, well, you know, we heard your complaints the last time, and it's still not the appropriate time, I'm sure that a lot of us would feel frustrated if we didn't have that on the onset.
And everything you're saying needs to be, is actually, is actually being recorded as we speak.
Right, right.
So, I mean, it's all out there, and those are things that, actually, I'm gonna contact Mr. Stevens and tell him that I've tabled it because he wasn't here. And I'm gonna tell him he's got, he's got a whole lot of concerns in the neighborhood. And he's welcome to listen to the recording, and he can hear them.
Thank you.
And just so you know, in, in as far as runoff, uh, you know, any development we do, there's not supposed to be any additional water leave the site after it's developed than prior to.
And the regulations are even stronger now than they were two months ago.
Okay, well, at this point.
I know that's a concern of yours.
It's a huge concern of mine, because at this point, that property, the, the grade is elevated notably higher than my property. And anytime there's the slightest bit of rain, my front yard floods. And I, I could not find it, which I would love to have, but evidently, it would have been not appropriate at this time anyway. I have photographs of me standing in the middle of my road, in front of my driveway, and there is a river ankle deep coming from my yard and going across the road to my neighbor's yard, because his yard is even lower than mine. So, honestly, my, I mean, I have a genuine concern that if they bring more dirt in there, if they bring more houses in there, it's, all it's gonna do is flood more.
Okay.
And, and, and you know, I know that in speaking with the gentleman who lives across the street from me, who is a, um, uh, Richland Fire Department Chief, he has brought concerns to the county multiple times about the drainage issues. And, and yet, we still don't have a resolution to that, so.
Well, the problem with that is, and I, I'm gonna answer that right quick, because that is a flat area. Only thing we can help drum it on is the, the road ditch. We can't do anything about the ditch that runs down through the creek that runs through there and, you know, goes down to, uh, close to the high school, that same bridge, same creek.
Yeah, and I understand the creek, and I actually am not, I'm not.
Coming to us with things, we can only do our, our part.
I'm not referencing the creek, I'm not referencing the creek, I'm referencing the road right in front of my driveway.
And all we can do is keep the ditch open. I can't, if it's built in a low area, you know, we can only try to keep the ditch open where the water will flow the best it can. But then, once it gets to that, if that creek's full, as it does in some of the big rains, then that amount of water, then it'll only take so much water. And I know that helps, that whole area has been a problem.
Sure.
For years, and, and I don't know what the whole answer is, other than what we can try to at least keep the road ditches open.
Right.
But we have to have a little help from some people that, uh, tend to have some problems. You know the one I'm talking about, that all their debris washes into the ditch?
Yes, I know exactly who you're talking about.
You know exactly where I'm going there.
I do, I do. But, and so, for my road though, and, and, and just as, as, as a cautionary tale, you know, when it's ankle deep and it's rushing as it was, you know, I've got a five-year-old son, and he only weighs thirty-six pounds, you know? And standing on a county road, he should be safe. So.
All right, well, thank you for your comments this morning, very much.
Hey, for, for, let me say one more. I live as far out as you can get. And I understand exactly what everybody's saying. Uh, we are experiencing so much growth right now.
Right.
And right now, y'all may have some say-so in what goes on around you. I would think it would be very beneficial for, and I don't know the guy, Mr. Stevens, Stever, whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Stevens.
And y'all to come together, that way you might have more, uh.
Well, and if he comes to this next meeting that y'all are talking about, that might be an opportunity for that.
In an informal, in an informal arena before the meeting or something.
Right, I'm not, well.
Well, the reason we're saying this.
Unless there was a mediator to make sure that, you know, because this is a, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna be honest with y'all. I got a master's degree, I've done a little bit of different stuff in psychology. When you get tensions tied.
Don't, don't grate me when you leave, please.
I won't, I wanna promise, I, I wanna say y'all have done really great with your Robert's Rules of Order and your appropriate public behavior. But, um, but, yeah, if, if, and that would be a beautiful thing, but I think there honestly would have to be a, a nonpartisan mediator in that situation. Cause I know personally, I mean, this is something that is very important to me. I'm sure, you know, how many ever acres Mr. Stevens has invested is very important to him too. You know, it's, it's his land that he's trying to make a profit from. It's my home, so we both have a big ticket on that discussion.
That's the reason he's trying to say it may be sooner or later, something would happen to this problem. Sooner or later.
Yeah.
Right, and I get that, and I get that.
And so, maybe this would be the time to make it be the best it could be.
Yeah, and I get, yep, and I get that too.
Even if it's much bigger lots and half as many houses or something.
I mean, you know, something, I'm just saying sooner or later, and I, and he's just trying to say, get the best you can at this time, cause it could be worse later. Sooner or later, something's gonna happen.
He goes and gets some, you know, big-time law firm, and then it gets into this and that, and they cram something down our throat that we don't want at all, you know? So, I think if, right now's the time, if y'all could, maybe come a little closer together. And maybe it won't work out, I don't know. And I don't know.
Right.
I'm in, I'm indifferent, I mean, I.
We'll pass.
I see both sides.
Hey, so he can listen to the recording, and he can pick up from everything and see what he might do to, to please everyone if it's, if it's possible.
Sure, and I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen for us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you for your comments. All right, Mr. Slay?
Yes, before we close that public hearing, I wanna clarify one thing. I've learned, doing this for nine years, that, um, it's probably best to have more information on the record when it comes to mine than just not saying anything and then wishing you had later. I wanna make it really abundantly clear that the issues in a rezoning hearing are sort of narrow. They're where, they're whether or not the use of the property as proposed is in keeping, reasonably in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, whether there is a need for that kind of property or development in the area, and whether or not there's been a material change in the circumstances, the character of the neighborhood. Is there uniformity there, or is it something that's just stuck in the middle of something where it doesn't really belong, if I can say it that way? So, that's a fairly narrow aspect of what rezoning matter addresses. The issues of, of flooding and access, and whether or not water's gonna leave the site, those are development issues that need to be addressed. And we have mechanism in places, in, in place to do that. I wanna state one more time for, for clarity purposes. Those mechanisms to address those development issues do not involve public hearings. I just, I wanna be clear about that. And so, if the board is of a mind to hear about those, there's really not a place to do that except in the, the context of the rezoning. What I don't wanna see us do is to get into a situation where we are allowing development issues to impact our decision-making with respect to rezoning. Those two things don't go together. There may be some bleed over aspects of it that we need to be aware of, but I, I just wanna make sure that we keep that clear. The second thing I wanna say is this, those protections that are built into our development ordinance that address things like access, like traffic flow, like the condition of the roads, like drainage, like retention ponds, all of those things, where we require the developer to have restrictive covenants so that the use of the property remains uniform to some degree, and that we don't have neighbor, bad neighbor problems, those kinds of things. That, addressing that does not mean that we are making the developer fix all of the existing problems in the neighborhood as they are. And that is very important to get on the record here. So, I think what you heard was that there are some existing potential flooding problems, potential drainage impacts that are ongoing now. This is with the property in its undeveloped state. What we will be attempting to address on the development side is to make sure that what is happening right now with respect to stormwater does not further negatively impact the surrounding area. But we're not gonna ask Mr. Stevens to fix the drainage problems that are there now.
Right.
I wanna make sure that that is on the record. The last thing I wanna hear.
What do you think?
A year and a half from now is, y'all said it wasn't gonna ever flood again. And that is something that I've learned.
I need him to fix areas up, uh, north part of the county too.
I have one question about this though. If that gentleman had bought the land, um, and I guess that's why we're getting incorporated into this, it looked like it was in the corner of the lot, of the proposed development. Why not just leave him out?
That's what I was, my neck was, these, there's two of them, I think.
Is there more than one that these are sold?
Two, no, but there's two that's affected by the zoning. There's two that's, that we're kinda incorporating. Can we split those two? I mean, do we have to?
They don't have to be, it would just be.
Well. Can we just address this first and not aggravate these people? And then after we get past that, we'll talk to them and see what their mindset is?
I would just think if there's an issue, we won't include them.
Yeah.
You know, they had the information, and they had an opportunity to call us, and they didn't want to be included. But it was my understanding that they were okay with it.
So, what I would like to see us do today is to have Jared make a motion that we simply not act on this matter, okay? And then I, I wanna work with Ms. Renee. I suspect that what we probably wanna do, given the objection of adding these additional parcels, probably what we wanna do is to start this process again. And that way, it's gonna push us to a point where, and we're gonna have to redo it. And, and I don't believe that we should charge Mr. Stevens any additional fee associated with redoing this. But my suggestion would be that we start this again. Uh, and that way, the neighborhood gets another bite at the apple to come back before you at an, an appropriate time. Mr. Stevens can adjust his schedule accordingly and be here. Uh, and we're really only talking about a delay of maybe a few weeks.
All right.
Okay, am I right about that, Ms. Renee?
I don't know, I mean, I couldn't answer that, I just knew it was gonna be gone.
Yeah, well, just as far, if we start the process over.
Well, let me ask you one thing.
Yeah? Yeah, start up.
Yeah.
Why are we doing that?
We need to pull those parcels out and not have a joint application.
Pulling those out.
Just a Stevens application. Republish, repost, we could do it.
Uh, cause we're pulling them out, that's a different zoning.
We're gonna amend the application so that we pull the, these extra parcels out. It's only Mr. Stevens.
If it stays RE1A, what all could be, what could he sell some of those lots for?
Well, he can't get below one acre, that's for sure. We know that for a fact.
Okay, if he wanted to sell one acre and a half lots?
He can't though, that's subdividing, that's a, that's a subdivision.
No, if you wanted to go down, down the road, if you wanted to go down the road.
Doing one at a time.
Doing one at a time. Huh?
It'd be four one-acre lots.
Right.
Cause in RE1A.
See, I think they need to, need to hear that too.
That's what I was referring to earlier.
Yeah, you understand what I'm saying.
You know, you got some control now, but if he wanted to. I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna say it, cause I don't wanna up here. Uh, I don't wanna give anybody any ideas, but.
So, does he have road frontage that far?
Yeah, yeah, all the way around it, nearly.
Oh. Okay.
Not him, but say, uh, let's use something somewhere else. If somebody has ten acres or five acres, and it's RE1A, they can cut out an acre or an acre and a half, whatever the health report says, and sell it, just like you got your four acres. And then, six months later.
Yeah, you got it on, you got it on Highland, you got it on, uh, Williams Road.
And. Well. Well, I'm, I'm talk, I'm using a hypothetical, okay? Just like you got your four acres, he could cut off an acre and a half, sell it. Six months later, another acre and a half, sell it. Six months later, another one, and put whatever. And y'all wouldn't even, this, we wouldn't be having a meeting, because he wouldn't rezonate. I mean, I'm saying, use this time to get more out of, or what you...
More protection.
Try, try to negotiate. Uh, I mean, I think the whole board feels your pain. You move out in the country, and you wanna live in the country, and before you know it, you're not in the country anymore. Uh, I understand.
Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to close the public hearing.
A lady with her hand up back there.
But I wanted to understand.
We rezone, what is the minimum acreage that he would have to have for that subdivision? That's the main question.
Under the zone in one acre.
Yes, if he, yeah.
No, if...
So, it's the same thing, one acre, but it's not individually sold to different people.
It's not sold as allotted, planted subdivision. It's one acre. RE1A is one acre, RE1 is one acre. That's our, that's our most aggressive zoning in the entire county. One acre. That, uh, you, you've got to have sewer in order to get below one acre lots. Or some kind of whiz bang septic that I'm not aware of.
Well, yeah, you could get a one acre lot, but even then, you might have to get an engineered system, you know, to be able to contain all your sewage.
Correct. Right. So, if, if I may, let's, we'll, let's close this public hearing.
Thank you.
And then...
Any motion made by Mr. Morrison?
I have just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the access to this property only here on Holland? Is that the only way to get into the property he's trying to... There is on Williams, too. I'll have to call him.
Thank you. Mr. Slay.
All right, let, we'll close that public hearing, and, uh, let me see. Jared, what we want to do is to, um, is, is to table this, this action.
Table this, start over again.
All right, so Jared's making that motion. We need a second on that.
You're gonna take out these other, these two to start, that were added in there.
Right, so we're asking our building official to amend and restate the application so that it's clear that the county is not joining, and the two extra parcels that were between two zoning classifications will not be included in the rezoning request. She will republish the notice for the hearing on December the fifteenth, right, Renee?
Okay.
All right, so everybody that's here is hearing that. Uh, we're gonna try to get them notice directly, uh, but they're hearing it on the record now, December the fifteenth, at nine AM. This very room, we will reconstitute the hearing, and at that time, the board will hear any additional objections and from Mr. Stevens.
Well, neither may, I, I don't know where he went or why he can't be here. I don't even know, so we need to make sure when he's back.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't know. He just came to me and said, something has happened, and I can't be there.
Okay.
So, that's all I know.
Well, uh, my, my suggestion will be that we notify him today, if at all possible, and that if he has a conflict on the fifteenth, uh, then he's gonna have to clear that conflict to be here.
I'll send him a message. That's the only way I know really to do anything. I'll just send him a message and just...
On Holland, if that date won't work, they'll still get a notice of the hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'll be honest with you, Renee. I'm, I'm more interested in him accommodating us and these folks than I am us accommodating him.
But, but I didn't make sure he's even gonna be here in town.
Right.
I don't know where he is.
Yeah, it's his application.
All right, so...
We're gonna take it up on the fifteenth. He needs to be here, and if he's not here, I think he can anticipate that it...
Probably won't get through.
He probably won't take action.
Action will be taken. All right, uh, that motion made by Mr. Morrison?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item G's been tabled.
Thank y'all for coming and expressing your, I hope we cleared up a few things.
Item H, Mr. Slay.
Hang on just a second. I had, I, I've gotta overcome what I just read there. All right, here we go. This is, uh, item H, consideration of and potential action to approve a contract between Backyard Burgers and Rankin County for concession services. At the Rankin County... I've been in, by the way, this came to me late, um, and I, I do apologize. We were trying to anticipate that I would have the contract, the proposed agreement, in hand. Uh, I'm gonna need a little bit additional time to make sure that we get through all of the aspects of the contract. What I have read looks to me to be acceptable. I don't see any issues with it, but I still need to study it just a little bit further, and I haven't had access to it long enough. I've only had it for a couple of days. Uh, so here's the material terms. It's twenty-five percent of gross sales are remitted to the county. Uh, we are proposing a two-year term, which would, essentially, which would extend along with this board's term, uh, until the completion of this board's term. It'd be a two-year term agreement. They are not requiring anything from the county as far as, uh, investment or upgrades or anything along that line with respect to the use of the property. They will simply have access to the property. They will make the improvements that are required. It'll be at their expense. Um, and they are anticipating, uh, being in place and ready to go for our December shows. Uh, I've got time to get this done, uh, as far as the contract is concerned, and my suggestion would be to have it back in front of you at the work session and let you authorize the execution of it then. That still works in our timeframe. The work session's on the thirtieth, and so we'll have time to get it executed.
Can we not just approve it based on your going over it?
Yeah, and that's fine, but I, you know, since we've got the thirtieth sitting there for us, Jay, my, my preference would be let's, let's get it back in front of us.
Do you motion to table that, or just...
No, sir.
Just a motion. Quick question. I was under the impression we were doing a shorter term on the agreement. It's three to six, now we've gone to two-year. Was the RFP called for what? What did we put in the RFP? Did we address that?
We didn't state what a specific term. We requested that each proposer provide us with, uh, a, a request that we recommend internally. I don't know necessarily that they are, um, if that's a, a big hangup, if we wanted to go back and say we want to do a one-year deal.
What is it? What is our termination? What, does either party have an option to terminate?
Thirty days.
Third day notice.
Thirty day out.
Yeah, we still...
Any cause.
That's it.
Just, just you give it...
Any or no.
If, if we got that, then I'm good with two-year. I'm not certain of reason why that, uh...
One, one thing that I thought of with a two-year agreement is that if we get into the middle of this, there's a lot of unknowns here.
Sure.
Okay, and one of those unknowns is the sort of, um, feedback utilization by the constituencies that are using the concession facilities at the horse barn. It's, um, it's a little bit, I'm sorry, at the multipurpose pavilion. I'm, I'm...
Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, and I did say work session while I go to, so I'm already in trouble for my word choices. Uh, the, one, one thing we just don't know is what sort of response, um, anticipated response we're gonna get. We think it's gonna be a good response. We think the people are gonna be really pleased with it. We think the offerings are gonna be... Well, I just better not say anything else. I might show up in the newspaper again. But, uh, that, we, we think things are gonna be different than they have been in the past, and that's gonna accrue to our benefit because it is a significant increase for us in terms of the potential revenue. One thought behind the two-year is that it is, quite honestly, so much better from a revenue, potential revenues side, that I felt like we would, we would be well-served to make sure we kept it for two years.
If the improvements they're talking about doing, is that, is that kinda like personal property type improvements? Where they could unscrew it and take it home with them?
Yes, sir.
I mean, nothing permanent that they would alter the, the, the structure itself?
Outside of, of a minimal impact to the, the structure itself, Bob, I don't anticipate anything that couldn't be removed.
Things count.
But everything that is being installed according to what we were told will be brand new.
I'm just kinda curious that, you know, that, make sure there's not any language that if we, let's say we're six months in, and we're unhappy for whatever reason, we give them that thirty-day notice, and they spend a hundred grand or fifty grand making stuff, that we're not on the hook. We're gonna get caught up in lawsuit with them because they made those improvements, consideration thereof, that kinda like and stuff.
Well, you, I, I have made it a point, uh, with virtually every contractor that we work with, explaining to them that we work best with thirty-day outs.
Okay.
And just about every contract, I think that I've approved, in advance of you guys actually making an approval on something, has had no more than a sixty-day, uh, pull the plug, language in it.
I'm, I'm good with the target to look at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll just, uh, if we can, we'll just pass item H, and we're not gonna take action. The minutes will reflect that no action taken.
Is that okay with you, Laura? You sure?
All right. All right, the consideration, uh, item I, Mr. President, is consideration of potential action to approve the professional services agreement between Rankin County Wagner Engineering to provide a comprehensive drainer, drainage master plan for Rankin County. Uh, you have that contract, uh, agreement attached. I had about seven or eight small changes that I wanted to make. They made those changes, and I'm satisfied with the agreement. And at this time, it would be appropriate for you to act on that. Authorize, President, sign.
Got a question.
Sure.
On the last page of the contract, on Schedule D, program support services, funding, policy, education, and advocacy...
I don't think I got it.
I printed my own copy at home. Thank you very much.
Sometimes, sometimes you gotta do it yourself.
Yep.
Now, I need to get reimbursed for that, too, Laura, if I can.
Oh, my goodness. It's page nine, I...
Last nine, yeah. DI, DI, that last section. I guess that's the, uh, uh, the, help me out with what terminology here.
Those run together concurrently, by the way. That's not an X for twelve months?
Yeah, no, but my question is, that, that is the lobbying effort, right, to assist us with it? All right, my question here is, if you go through, it's gonna take you six to nine months to come up with a plan.
Right.
You know, so we don't even know what that plan's gonna be, and we don't know what that money's gonna be, or what that project's gonna cost and stuff like that. I don't want to burn through that money when I don't really know. I'd rather have that money in the second twelve year of a, second tw, second year of a contract. So, once I've determined the first year, okay, I was gonna, I need five million dollars from the feds to help this project work. Now, here, go take that money, here's your money, and I go, go do what you said you could help us do. Make sense?
Yep.
I mean, you see what I'm saying? I, I, if it runs concurrent, what good does it do us for them to go up there and promote a plan that we don't even know what that plan is yet?
Agreed. Uh, the, the, if you look on the second page of the agreement under the term, what you find is that it's set up to be a one-year agreement.
Okay.
It can be renewed.
Well, I just don't want them to request funding, if they, a monthly funding amount for this amount, and then we get stuck in the year, we go, we, we term, we say, okay, we'll go a second year. And, okay, fine, but we're gonna need another twenty-five or thirty thousand to advocate your position in DC. I, I just don't see that...
So, basically, you want to approve it minus that fee?
I want, I want this to be in here, too. I want a two-year contract, or, or, or this to be done in the second year, or after the findings have been determined. Does that make sense?
It does, but let me ask you a question. What, um, why don't we ask them how this typically works?
Okay.
Because I, in my head, I'm thinking that there may be a reason why in month three,
Yeah.
they have need to go and talk to somebody in DC along the lines of, hey, this is what we're seeing preliminarily. Is it even worth our time to come talk to y'all?
Okay, that's fine.
That, that's why I think it was crafted as a one-year deal with a renewal, and they just simply needed to make sure that it was understood, that the lobbying effort would be a total of twelve months, and it's anticipated that it would run concurrently, but it doesn't have to. So, I think what I need to do is just clarify with our contact at Wagner, hey, did we get twelve months' worth of lobbying potential? And if we don't use it, we still have twelve months' worth, right?
That's right. Now, I don't want to be billed for it, and that's just part of the contract,
Exactly.
and find out that end of the year, okay, we, you, you know, you've used, we've used it.
I think we can clarify that.
Do we need to hold up on approving this?
No, I don't have a problem proving. I, I looked at the rest of it, and I didn't go great DM on an attorney, but it, it looked good to me. I mean, there, you know, there's a lot of standard border plate language, but if Craig is good with it, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure that we don't get deemed, you know, for another check for additional support down to year two.
Right. Bob, on, on page six, paragraph eight, either the client or Wagner may terminate this agreement at any time, with or without cause, upon the giving of seven calendar days' notice.
Yeah.
If we get a bill for something that we don't think that was what we understood, and we're not happy about that, that's a pretty short trigger, and I, I'm satisfied that, given their, um, uh, willingness to go on such a tight trigger, that, uh, that if they know our issue is we don't want to run out of funding assistance help early, we don't expect to be billed twice for something like that, I, I think they'll work with us and clarify it.
I'm good with that.
So, I, I think the motion would be to approve it with the understanding that we get some sort of
Clarification.
written clarification about the funding assistance and how that's supposed to work with it being a one-year deal. What happens?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign.
Item J.
Item J passes. Item J.
Thank you. Item J is a little bit of a house cleaning. Uh, we mentioned last board meeting that there was a road segment that serves as the primary access to the Town of Puckett Sewish Lagoon, and that we, uh, and the, the Town of Puckett, through its Board of Aldermen, declared that road segment to be a public road by way of prescription. It's been accessed by and on behalf of the town serves that lagoon for, forever. And so, uh, we are acknowledging receipt of a survey and legal description for this unnamed road segment that provides access to the lagoon. We're accepting it for county, as a county public road for purposes of public access and maintenance. We're authorizing nine-one-one to name it, uh, and we have a proposed name already, and the authors, and then we're also authorizing the road manager to post a signage. That's what that matter is.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item J passes. Thank you, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir.
Item ten, Ms. Laura Oster.
First item I have is the renewal of our law enforcement liability and our public officials, um, in the amounts that stayed to hear from our presentation.
Motion approved, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item B, Ms. Oster.
Next item is authority to renew our medical insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield and excess risk as our reinsurance carrier under Mickey Watkins.
Motion approved, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion?
Yeah, quick question. What about that, uh, pharmacy thing? Are we gonna catch that subject to you? We don't have to have approval?
We don't have to have that approval right now, because that wouldn't affect our rating, only our ability to control our costs. But we will get that back to you just soon as Mickey gets it.
We're not in it, we're not of appetite to, to adjust, uh, deductibles at this point.
No.
Okay, that's fine. I just got a question. I want to see what the numbers are before we, mm-hmm, before we jump into it.
What's the time period on looking at those numbers? Does that need to be done?
Well, that deductible, it'd be short. Well, we can do it at any time, but it'd be best to do it between now and close of the...
So, would that need to, would that need to wait on this deal here?
No, it would not. I think that we need to go ahead because we have open enrollment next week. That could be something that if we could adjust it and get notification out by January one. If not, he said it could be done at any time. Just limits the impact if you don't do it in a full-year cycle.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item C passes. I'm sorry, item B passes. Item C, Ms. Laura.
Authority to renew our contract with Delta Dental, and that is a two-year rate guarantee at the current rate that we have.
So moved, second.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign.
Thank you. At this time, uh, since it is our insurance also, I'd like to add, um, in here, the renewal of our life insurance with Cigna for a one-year renewal.
Question to add it to the agenda?
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion to approve? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item D, Ms. Oster.
This is to accept our consumer price index calculation, which is effective October one, with, uh, waste management for both the residential collection and the disposal. That's a two-point-four-oh percent increase on both.
I'll make a suggestion. We let Mr. Gaines negotiate that with Waste Management.
Second.
Well, they're not gonna get it.
Well, I mean, and I guess that was one of my questions out of the gate. What are our options here, other than Waste Management?
Built in our contract, there is the language that they are allowed to use the consumer price index each year for an increase.
When does the contract terminate with Waste Management? Or it has to be re-upped?
It was, it was four, four-year.
Starting when we came in office?
Probably, yes. Pretty close to it.
We'll look at it.
So, can we just table this right now, Waste Management? Can we do that?
You can, and I can. I mean, yes, well...
Does it need to be addressed today, I guess, is my question?
They're gonna want to start collecting that money.
They're going to, I'm sure that when we get our bill,
We want a lot of things.
it will be on there already. I'm sure when we get our bill, that they will have built it into that.
Look, what about this? When they do this, or when we do it, the county, and we have so many direct pays, is everybody's messed up like mine is, that after like a month or three months or whatever, you get this letter that you're not gonna pick your garbage up, or, or you're not gonna be in a bag. No, it's you can't buy your tag. You can't buy your tag. You go to get your tag.
You go to get your tag. No, you can't get your tag because you're delinquent on your garbage pickup. And you say, well, I got direct pay, how am I? We don't know. And then you find out that this cost index went in, and you didn't know about, I mean, the general public out there don't know, so they didn't change the amount of deduction. And that's happened to me.
It's not going to change that. This is strictly on the county. What we charge.
Oh, good, but you know, we have done that, and it wasn't the index, so I think it went up $2 or something, and then people didn't know, and, yeah, it was embarrassing. My wife called me up and was really upset with me because I hadn't been paying.
But you said.
But I had been.
You prepay, you put a set amount. You just don't put it in there to, just like a routing number?
You let me have yours, let me have yours without a set amount. Hell, about three months into it, I'm going to get you.
This amount will not affect that, though. This will just be on the county side, but the rate charge, the individual will not change.
Is there any pathways around discussion?
The answer, the short answer is probably no. I do recall, however, that when we negotiated the existing contract, I think I may have introduced some language in that CPI section that may help us at least have a seat at the table kind of thing. So let me go back and look at that. I distinctly remember that we had gotten burned by that previously, and so I wanted to have some stop gas in there, so I think there's.